The Committee on Public Safety will come to order this September 4th, 5 o'clock PM. Can we have the roll call?
Counselor Dion?
Here.
Counselor Kilby?
Chair Hart?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, while any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by these, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. For item number one, we have citizens' input. To the David and Maria, do you guys want to come up?
I think they're going to come for this specific.
Oh, okay, that's fine. There's no citizens' input. All right, on item number two, is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 29?
Motion to approve?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is a resolution to convene with the forward police chief or representative of the administration and area residents to discuss safety issues in the area of 181 South Main Street and Old Second Street. You guys want to come down?
Good evening.
We all know who you are, but just state your name and...
Seth Aiken City Administrator.
Mark Garvin, Chief of Police.
What I'll do first is I'm just going to read the resolution that was authored by Vice President Linda Pereira. Whereas the residents living at 181 South Main Street have expressed concern with noise, lights, and illicit activity after hours from nearby clubs and alleyways in the area of 181 South Main Street and Old Second Street. And whereas residents have filed reports with the forward police department but feel more needs to be done as the issue continues and at times there is no police response when the complaints are filed, according to these residents, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety meet with the chief of police or representative of the administration, area residents, and other interested parties to discuss the public safety matter. We went over this, I think we did too. James and I invited the people from this particular address, but we couldn't get in touch with them at that time, so there's no one here representing them. But I will definitely be in contact with them after this meeting. But Chief, why don't I let you speak to this? This is a, this was actually taken, I'm not too sure about the history, Counselor Dion, might know more than I do, but I know this is a matter that Counselor, resolution filed after the meeting of, I think, 2023. And I think it might have got acted on a little bit in public safety, but I'm not sure because we're just kind of cleaning the public safety up from last, last Public Safety Committee. But if you want to just chime in here, have we gotten any reports in the past year as to the, any issues there at that particular site?
Sure, so this is a constant issue. This is one that we've been on top of, obviously, since the resolution came in last year. Last year, I think we only had maybe 10% of the volume of police officers checking that area. So it really wasn't getting the police service that it really needed. This year, since the beginning of the year, we've had over, I believe, I think it's 70-plus or 80-plus incidents where police officers are stopping, getting out of the car, walking the Old Second Street, making sure everything's fine. But to be honest with you, looking at the calls, it's still just, it's a constant presence that's needed. There's a lot of homelessness issues that, where people are congregating there at night and we're shooing them away, and then they're going to either the parking deck or to some other location, and then obviously when the officer leaves, there's some recurrence. So it's just constant pressure that we need to take in that, in that area.
And in this, are we talking, this is Board and West area?
So Old Second Street is right, right across the street here?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, that's right.
Where they have the farmer's market, where they put the benches.
I get you, yeah.
So obviously, the benches tend to be a little bit of an attractive hazard. Just so you know, from this year, so since January 1, we've had approximately, I think, 81 total calls for outside service, but keep in mind, 70 of those calls are specific to police officers being proactive and stopping, and that's generating a, a call for us. But right now, since the beginning of the year, it's been about 11 to 12 calls.
So it's up that alleyway, correct?
Correct.
And that's a, so I do, I remember being on the council years ago, that was an issue then. And I think the biggest complaint there, and I'm not too sure because I didn't go drive by there, but at night, is that, are there lights there, Seth? At that particular location?
So not that I know of.
So I think... I don't think, we might not be responsible for it.
Sure.
It might be the owners of the building next to that, that housed the...
Yeah, I don't, so I remember when I was in the Corporation Council's office, I had a very brief conversation with the owner of that building that is, you know, that runs along the length of Old Second Street. And, you know, he was very upset about the presence of homeless, you know, tried to have a conversation with him, which wasn't terribly productive regarding, you know, just the law around this, which is, you know, the difficulty that we've talked about over and over with, you know, moving people when you don't necessarily have a place to put them. You can shoo them away from loitering, that's, that's certainly an option, and that's an important option. And I think the 70-plus calls, which aren't really calls, but rather proactive policing, you know, since the start of the year is indication that the police are doing, you know, the best they can in proactively, you know, getting people out of that area. And then 11 other calls from actual residents. You know, but the, you know, the, apparently when that area, when that alley was created, and it was, it was no longer a street, but it was, it became an alley, and then the benches and planters and other things were put there, the, what the city did is made sure that as long as an ambulance or a truck or a maintenance vehicle could get up there, that was really the sole requirement. And so it's, it's obviously maintain that ability to do that. And aside from that, there's not a ton we can do, other than the proactive policing that the police have been doing. You know, just to stay on top of that and make it an unwelcome place for people to loiter. I don't know about lights or noise or the clubs or what the reference is there, and that may have been a 2023 reference, but as far as I know, you know, it's the folks that congregate there that make the noise, you know?
Yeah.
Especially in the winter where there's heat, although they did fence in that area where people were sleeping.
Certain areas, yes.
So they've, they've made that less inviting. There were folks sleeping on the heating area. There was like a generator or something, you know? And so that is now less accessible. So I think that problem has mitigated a little bit.
Comes with the...
Just as a point of information, that parcel of land is owned by the city because it goes with the Third Street garage.
Right.
So it is owned by the city. It's not owned by the individual who owns the apartment buildings.
Okay, so the, you're talking about the walkway up there, up there, okay. I mean, maybe, maybe that might be, if it's not lighted, if there's no lights there at night, we might, might maybe, you know, hopefully get some up there, that might, you know, mitigate anybody from, you know, just staying there for a long period of time.
Sure.
And I know that, that when the benches and the chairs and whatnot were implemented in there, it was, it was very good. And it was good for the residents, but it's, I think it's turned into a little bit of a kind of a living room for people that, you know, in the summer, summer nights, just hang out there maybe too late.
Correct. During the day, obviously, it's, it's a little bit more difficult because people are there during the day.
Right.
And it's free, open, public space.
Yep.
People have the right to recreate in that area. That's what it's there for, but obviously there are limits to what they can do with their activity. Obviously, drinking and doing drugs obviously is not allowed there.
Right.
But that's what we're combating, and that's why we've had the 90% increase in police proactivity in that street. Obviously, that's compared to last year, so obviously, this is still an issue. I would suggest that we keep this open and see if we try a, maybe a compounded different tactic, you know, layer something else on top of it and see what we can get.
Yep, I agree with that. And Chief, just to, you said that there were like maybe 10 or 11 calls thus far this year?
Correct.
What, what kind of calls were they? Were they pretty much loitering and...
Um, you know, they've had some fights.
Yep.
You've had some homeless people who were being loud. I mean, somebody was living, sleeping in one of the alley alcoves, if you will. I think, you know, we got a call like 6:00 in the morning, somebody was sleeping out there. But, you know, like I said, it's a lot of different calls, noise or it seems to be noise issues, a lot of it coupled with homelessness issues.
Okay. I think maybe make a motion to...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next item on the agenda is number four. It's the convene with the director of traffic and parking and a representative of the forward police department to discuss possible plans to remedy the vehicle, vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian safety matters within the area of Pine Street and Robeson Street intersection. If you step down. David, you want to come down? I'm going to read out the resolution that was authored by Counselor Andrew Reposo. Whereas the Pine Street and Robeson intersection has been the location of many traffic accidents as increased overall concerns regarding public safety, and whereas the intersection currently only has stop signs on the eastbound and westbound of Pine Street, and whereas many automobiles, bicycles, and pedestrians commute within this neighborhood as it is nearby to a large hospital, historical cemetery, veteran center, and public park, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the director of traffic and parking and a representative of the forward police department to discuss possible plans to remedy the vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian safety matters within the area of the Pine Street and Robeson Street intersection. So welcome, if you could just give your name and address.
Dave Olivera, 210 Robeson Street.
Okay.
Stephanie MacArthur, Director of Traffic and Parking.
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
So on this particular issue, I know, I think I was talking to Counselor Reposo maybe about a week ago, and I think he did say that some things have been already remedied.
Yes, that is correct.
Do you want to maybe get into that?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. And then we'll hear from David.
Of course. So essentially, I think the issue is the vehicles traveling southbound on Robeson Street. Right now, there is a bus stop on the west side of Robeson Street, and I think it's the, also the traffic that is heading eastbound on Pine Street. Because what's happening is when there's vehicles parked too close to that corner on the west side of Robeson Street, anybody traveling east on Pine cannot see the oncoming traffic heading south on Robeson. So I think that's where the problem was. So on the west side of Robeson Street, currently there is a bus stop there. So essentially, you can't park within 60 feet of a bus stop. So what we did in traffic, we did put up a no parking here to corner sign. We did it about 52 feet from the bus stop because the bus stop is essentially right at the corner. It's probably about a foot in from the corner. So we did it 52 feet, no parking here to corner. Essentially, any vehicles that were parked there prior to that sign being put up, they were still illegally parked and should have been tagged. So that sign was just reinforcing the fact that you can't park within that bus stop. We also put up some solar stop signs, both eastbound and westbound on Pine Street. On Robeson Street, we also put up some solar crossing signage as well, hopefully to slow down the traffic, knowing that they're approaching a four-way crosswalk. So those changes started July 18th, and we completed them fully. I'm sorry, they started July 8th, completed fully by July 18th. So I don't know if it's been any better. I'm not, I haven't gotten any complaints since, so I'm just...
Perfect you.
Perfect you, right? There was actually one after the things went up on the, on there. I just talked to the chief a few minutes ago, very professional, and, you know, gave me some, you know, input about what, what he's done and what you have done already. Obviously, you know, my main concern is obviously public safety for everybody and make sure that nobody's, you know, getting hurt and stuff like that. The only reason why I brought in the, the resolution with, for, I asked Counselor Reposo was because there was one incident that I couldn't sit back any longer and let, let it allow, allow to happen, when I had a older man get hit so bad that it spun his van and it landed in the store next door.
Oh, wow.
And if it wasn't for the barricade, he probably would have went through the store. And it hit so hard that, that his airbags went off, and he actually rolled out of the, out of the, the van while there's smoking, in pain, like literally in pain. The veteran center came over to help him. Everybody was trying to help him, and everybody's, don't touch him, don't touch him, you know? But I do have to say, the response that, on the timing of, of the, of the ambulance that showed up was amazing. I, I couldn't believe it how fast the, the paramedic showed up on that point of, of that call. Police was obviously there. And it's not the first time that, you know, the police have said that, that this has been an ongoing situation with, with that area. I tend to probably a little bit disagree with the, with the, the corner of where the bus stop is. And all now, it eliminates a lot of it, where it now becomes a parking issue because now it's, where now you get the veteran center on, on Pine Street where it's loaded with cars, and now you got all of their traffic, plus you got, you know, the housings, you know, that is in that area that is trying to park. And you got on both sides where now it becomes traffic where, you know, you, you, two, two cars can't go by, you know, at the same time on that street with the, with the, with the, with the two-sided.
You're talking about Pine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With, with the two-sided, you know, parking.
Yeah.
So my, my thing is, I just like to try to make sure that this doesn't try to, you know, you know, happen again. Obviously, it's citywide, you know, everywhere, everywhere is getting it. But, you know, like I said, my, my main concern is to make sure that we try to, you know, you know, get it rectified. And another thing that I'm concerned about as well is the, and I'm sure it's probably a staffing issue, is a crossing guard on that, on that corner as well.
Mm-hmm.
Because there are a lot of little kids that run across those streets, and I've seen them almost get hit as well. And like I said, these kids sometimes don't really care, you know, they'll walk, you know, they're walking in front of them, and they don't care. But it, it's still a safety issue, and we can't just let that fall on deaf ear, you know? So those are my main concerns, is I want to try to make sure that we can try to eliminate a lot of that. And like, you know, like the chief said, we only had about five, I think he said, we, you know, when we talked off, about four or five.
Correct, yeah. This year, we've only had four accidents in that area. One since, you know, July 1 was, was the third one, and August 24th was the fourth one. But last year, last year, we had a total of 28 car accidents there. So this year, year-to-date, I think we're about seven, I'm sorry, from this year timeframe, we're 89% down compared to last year. So, you know, we only have a total of four this year. Last year was 28, so obviously, maybe some of the corrections that were made may have helped.
All right.
So we'll go, we'll go from there. But I did speak with some of the neighbors and Mr. Baz, who owns the gas station there. They're not in favor of changing any directions or any one-way, you know, corrections. They're not in favor of that. We did speak with Signal Man, the commander of the single unit in my department, Chris Hathaway. We talked about, you know, what would it look like to have more lights there? But keep in mind, you already have, you know, one set of lights at the bottom of that hill, and I think, you know, another intersection up, there's, there's also a set of lights to...
That's locusts, right.
To start thinking about money in that intersection, just for the lights, not the cement or the traffic study or anything else that has to get done first. We're talking about maybe somewhere in the area of $300,000 just to put up some lights there. But just to give you an idea of what it would cost if, you know, that was a decision that was to be made.
In my opinion, I would, I would spend that money and then lose a life, you know? That's, I wouldn't want to lose a life like that.
Sure. Nobody, nobody, I mean, there's no amount of money, right, that compares to a loss of life?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's making, nobody's certainly making that on here.
Right, exactly.
We're just saying, this is, this is a price point. This is what it would cost to be in the ballpark to talk about lights in that area.
Right.
But we're down to four. We can, we also have some additional speed signs that have been pretty effective with at least people lowering their speed. I know some of the neighbors, different from Ms. MacArthur's assertion, some of the neighbors believe that the problem and issue is the northbound lane. That's the speed at which people are coming up that hill make it difficult for people to make a proper judgment. So we're going to try to immediately try to get one of those speed signals up there that's, you know, flashing showing you your speed. Hopefully, that gets people to think about the speed and maybe slowing down.
Counselor Dion?
So when you're talking a traffic light, you're talking a regular full yellow-green-red traffic light?
Correct.
Which sometimes, when you have too many in a row, causes more problems than help.
You may have some bottleneck issues. That's why we would probably do a study first to see what it affects.
So what about if you had the yellow in two directions, red in the other direction as opposed to a regular traffic light?
We didn't, we didn't price that out as far as single lights, but I imagine that you probably wouldn't be too far off. Well, I can, I can get back to you on what that would look like.
Hmm, because that would be a situation where you wouldn't be, it would be different than having the regular light and keeping traffic there for probably two, two minutes at a time.
Sure.
You'd just have people who would have to slow down with the yellow light, so they'd have to pay attention, and then the ones that would have to stop before they proceeded. Just an option.
Sure.
All right, so I mean, maybe going forward, we'll, I think we should table this as well because we're going to keep this active and see what, you know, what's going to maybe happen with, with the remedy that Stephanie has secured there at this time, but maybe just keep an eye out on it. And obviously, you know how to contact me.
I'll know you very well now.
Yep, exactly.
So have you yourself seen, seen a difference since those things were put into...
Well, the only reason why I say I kind of disagree with it is because of the fact that we have less this year, but we just started it. And it's already, and it's only, and it's already, what, July? August? No, September, I'm sorry, September.
September.
So if, so it really, I don't know. I, I don't know if that's, if that's fixed it, because obviously, we just implemented it now.
Sure.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's only been six, it takes six weeks.
But it has happened since we've already had that, so...
I can also put up some additional, you know, dangerous intersection signage prior to approaching the intersection in hopes that it will also slow people down with that. So I can definitely get that up too.
Chief?
My main concern is obviously is, is the kids as well crossing those streets.
Right.
What would you consider to be a reasonable amount of time to see how effective this is moving forward, now that school is started, et cetera?
Well, I'd, I'd love to see a sample size of at least a month. You know, let's put out the, what I would like to do before we put out any other signage because sometimes, you know, signage, it gets a little cloudy because you have so many signs that it's just a distraction. So I would like just to get our flashing speed sign in that northbound lane, let's take a look at what the speed is, what, what type of, you know, what's the amount of cars that are coming through here, and let's see where we are from there. What, what does it look like in a month? You know, what's the data show us after that month if we're still having more car accidents? And we'll go from there.
And in terms of someone to cross the children?
So that's me. So that's me, essentially. So that's definitely something, I mean, the closest school over there would be that elementary school. Do you notice that there's an influx of students? Is it just in the morning? Is it just with the park? Do you notice it like on the weekend as well? Or is it just during the school?
No, it's definitely in the morning where the kids are coming in. And, you know, granted, some of them are with their, already with their parents.
Sure.
But then, a good portion of them are with, you know, by themselves. And obviously, they're not looking, they're just running, you know, so...
Yeah, so that's, that's definitely a discussion we'll have to have with the schools department. I know there is additional locations that they just recently added on. I can definitely see if this would also be an intersection that they would consider as well.
With that, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five is the, thank you very much, David. Number five is the convene with the director of traffic and parking and a representative from the forward police department to discuss speeding on Indian Town Road. Maria, you want to come down? I'll read that resolution that, that I wrote. And I wrote this based on the talks I had with Maria. We've actually been talking quite a lot. And also too, Stephanie's been very helpful in that area just recently as well. But the resolution is, whereas residents who live on the, on and around Indian Town Road have expressed concern regarding speeding in the neighborhood, and whereas Indian Town Road connects residents and visitors of Fall River to numerous nature preserves, trails in watershed area, whereas the quality of life and safety for residents, pedestrians, and drivers are of most importance, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the director of traffic and parking and a representative of the forward police department to discuss methods to improve public safety and decrease speeding in the Indian Town Road. Maria, welcome. Just state your name and address.
My name is Maria Susan. I'm on Indian Town Road, Fall River.
Okay. And let's, maybe we can just start off by Stephanie maybe just giving some of the examples of what you've done all, all...
Absolutely.
Yep, there.
So again, this was brought to my attention probably about the middle of July. I did send my maintenance crew out there. There was, there was some signage that was out there, but it was very old, very faded. Yes. So we did replace a lot of those signage.
Those needed to be replaced.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were old, they were faded.
I think they're 34 years, so how long is it, how long they've been there? They're outdated.
Yeah, they are. I do have to say, I have to agree with you on that. And also, the speed limit signs that were up there were at 30 miles per hour. I did reduce it to 25, yes. So that was effective. I made that change on July 25th is when my maintenance crew went up there and did that. And we did that based on the Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 193. So we could make the change in residential areas from 30 to 25. So I did that on, it was also done on the 25th. In the main areas, I also added some slow signage. I don't know if you noticed that?
Yes.
Starting from Blossom Road to Mohawk Drive.
Yes.
So again, like the chief said previously, you know, to put up too much signage may be a distraction.
And they're just going to drive by them.
Exactly. I, I know, unfortunately, everyone's in a rush to get somewhere.
Unfortunately, I am here, okay? I told Paul I would come up.
Mm-hmm.
I've been there for 34 years already, so I was one of the first.
Maria, can you just speak into the microphone?
I was one of the first houses built there, when, even before they put Mohawk Drive in. I bought the corner lot.
Okay.
You put signage on the corner lot on Mohawk and Indian Town Road. Actually, Shane Lelavant was out there.
Yeah, yep.
He saw me go to the mailbox. My mailbox is right there, next to the telephone pole that you put the signage up. I have fallen twice. When they come down from above, not from Blossom Road, up top. They fly down that road doing about 60 miles an hour. There's a new neighborhood in town. I did print it out because I wanted to see, wanted to show you folks, but here I am in this little corner with my little world. And if you go further up, all these new houses up here, new developments, okay? They don't get it. It's a country road. There's no signage up there. Also up here, when you go a little bit further up, which I think I even made a bigger one to come up here.
Okay.
There is a place there called the Copacabana Little Inlet, which I think maybe the police office, you would know, that they park their cars there, and we have the Pan Am guys... office, you would know, that they park their cars there and we have the Pan Am guys come down and they bike for the Pan Am. We get a lot of bikers.
Do they park in the lot or do they park on the road?
No, they're very good. They go up to the little section there just before the Yellow Hill Road, okay? And they park in there and they bike, oh, I'm sorry. They bike and they go down to Copacabana 'cause they do their practicing when they do the Pan Am in August, okay? They have noticed, 'cause a lot of them have gotten to know me there again because I'm thirty-four years. Hi Maria, hi, I wait, have bottles of water there if they need it, you know what I'm saying? 'Cause they're, they're doing their little thing for cancer, okay? They've noticed, Maria, what's going on? Why are these people driving like, this is like Indianapolis five hundred. We, we're afraid to come up here. So I've noticed a decrease. And we don't want to decrease folks like them.
Sure.
We, we put it on our Fall River website, you know, come to Fall River, we have, you know, places to go bike and, but you can't go biking anymore up there, it's crazy. Um, right across the street from that Mohawk inlet where, again, they'll, they'll show here.
Mm-hmm.
This is, again, I use me, 'cause it's me.
Yeah.
Here, I don't want to get in there, but I don't want anybody else involved, but this is perfect when I zoomed it out. Telephone pole's here.
Yeah.
Right in front of me is the gate that was put there so people can't go into the, with cars into the woods in there.
Yep.
Okay, which Mike Labashia and I have been always in contact for thirty-four years now. I would have loved to have a police officer back as coming there today. No sooner did they leave the area today. Um, I almost got hit. I went to the mailbox. I, I, and I just had gone by all the police officers, 'cause you had, I think five of them, all on Indian Town Road. One with a, um, the first picture that I showed you where that, it shows you down here where the woods are.
Yes.
Had one there, and on a, on a, I know who they are, unmarked. One where the, we just had a construction mishap, okay? Um, he was there with his little, as I'm coming up from Blossom Road and I'm going, it's not coming up from Blossom Road, it's coming from Indian Town Road down to Blossom Road.
Okay.
When they come flying down that road, I came out, I have a granddaughter, that's sixteen months old. I come out in the morning 'cause my driveway, I did it on purpose. I'm on Indian Town Road, the house should have gone here, but I did it this way so I could come out with my kids and not go into the traffic.
Sure, right, right.
So the driveway comes out this way. When I come here, if they're coming down this road, that road's getting narrower and narrower 'cause it has not been replaced in thirty-four years. The sides of the, I mean, I'm pretty sure you've been up there, it's getting worse, there's no place to go. So if they're coming this way and I'm out here with my granddaughter, you don't know what I have to do the other day. 'Cause the kid's on the phone, he's texting, doesn't seem, I have a whistle now, carry a whistle. I blew that whistle so hard, 'cause where am I gonna put my granddaughter? I shoved her into this guy's yard to get out of the way, because he wasn't paying attention. He's just coming straight down the middle of the road.
And so, so Maria, so, um, with, having said that, I remember going, go over with it, with you on this. It is, you know, it's, it's something where, also too, I, I think you told me before the meeting that the police have been down there already.
They were there today.
Yeah.
They were doing their thing.
We did an operation there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did it today. But when I came home from school, they would have noticed me. I have a white van, I have nothing to hide. I come down, I have three grandkids in a car and a ball, we call them ball spot, Papa's ball spot, has no hair. I mean, all in a car, and I'm coming from the school, 'cause I went to the school to pick up the granddaughter at Holy Trinity. I have all three of them. And I had noticed when I went down to pick her up, there was a police officer on my right, young kid, somebody stopped to ask him a question, and he's going like this, "Go ahead." And I'm going, "Honey, there's no room between your police cruiser, me, and this guy in his convertible Mercedes Benz." I know who he is very well. They have money, God bless them, they have money. I'm happy if somebody has money. You know, if they're happy, I'm happy for them.
Right, Maria, Maria. But so what I'm, what I want to do is make sure that we're getting every, everything done up there. And so I think by, from what Stephanie's saying, we have, and the chief has gotten the police there. But, but as well, as far as any questions, Council Dion, do you have questions for the chief or, um, but also too, chief, before I go to Council Dion, have you, do you have any, um, updated reports about the speeding up there or anything like that?
So, yeah, so we, we've been in the middle of, obviously in the middle of the summer, in the middle of processions, in the middle of, uh, events in the city. Um, so a lot of our signage and our, uh, traffic vehicles were, were tied up, we're doing traffic, uh, issues. Um, but, you know, we, we have a very small sample of what's going on up there. Um, I know there are some issues at night, but between ten and maybe like six in the evening, it seems to be the, the biggest issue with, uh, speeding. That's what the data shows. Um, I think over the law, uh, the course of the past week, like the highest anyone reached was fifty-eight. Um, if you've ever driven that road, that's really fast on that road.
Yeah, it is.
But at the same po- point, you know, we were on the road today, uh, with, uh, someone from the office and twenty-five is, is like, you know, you're traveling twenty-five. It's because it's long stretches of road.
Yeah.
Um, like we have in other areas where there's a long stretch of flat road and you can see a good country mile, um, it tends to make you want to go a little bit faster. Um, so, you know, the, we did, uh, a little sting today just to see, you know, where we would be between these hours. Uh, I think we gave out, uh, twelve citations. Um, obviously it was more, um, education at this point.
Yeah.
I think it was mostly all residents of the, of the area, uh, of the immediate area that we stopped today. Um, I think the highest or the fastest someone was going today was thirty-nine. Um, so it's over. Um, a lot of the other people were a little bit less, but I think part of it also is part of the new change in the speed as well. So there's a little bit of a change there, but, um, like I said, this is another small sample. I'd like to take a little bit more of a larger sample. But keep in mind enforcement, in order to get to, uh, this area, uh, you have to go through Westport.
Yes, you do.
You're getting off at the White's exit, you're taking a left, you're going, is it Old Beford Road?
Yeah.
Taking a left on Blossom Road and then you're all the way to the end. So we're going through a chunk of Westport, so on a given night, um, unless we're really taking really proactive steps, you know, it takes somebody to really get out there. But we don't have a lot of calls for service.
You have the, what is the thing that says, "This is your speed?"
Correct.
All right, you had it on, where's my other one? I think that one, yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
'Cause I'm here, you had it right here at this opening.
Mm-hmm.
And my husband says, "Why is it facing that way it should be facing? Had you turned it this way, facing and then coming down, you would have had more data." Because that's where they come from. I mean, I, I know people, and, and you're right, when you go through the section of the woods there, you feel like, yo, what the hell is the country road?
Yeah.
I said, "You want to do fifty over there, be my guest, you hit it there, you die, I don't care." But as soon as you get to the house there, slow down. There's children, there's children, there's people coming in and out of their homes. And the roads got narrower and narrower.
Mm-hmm.
And I've, I've mentioned that to Dan Agia, the planning person for our road.
Yes.
Is it Dan? It hasn't been done in thirty-four years. Have you ever tried to go there during a snowstorm? They plow the road, they barely give us enough room. You try to get by, by there, one, my van and the school bus, it's not happening. I have to pull into somebody's driveway. It's that bad. Then you get someone that's crazy that still decides to do fifty when it's a bad snowy day.
Sure.
And you're, you should see the things I see. You know, they've spun around at the bottom of that street, the bottom of my street and landed in the woods.
Mm-hmm.
Because they don't, it turns into a pond there. So I'm on the phone with the water department who cleans the drains there, 'cause that's not sewage, that's drains. Clean water goes into the, so.
But keep in mind, we're having the, the traffic there. Obviously the intent for us having it before the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Is because it's about a ninety percent, uh, effective rate in getting people to slow down. Doesn't necessarily get them to go the speed limit, but it does get people to slow down. And it's, it, and the data shows, but I'm saying even without the officers there, the sign itself is showing that it gets people to slow down. But obviously you have to kind of layer that with some enforcement. And because you're, you're absolutely right, you know, we don't get a lot of police officers out in that area.
You can't, well, I have two police officers that live in the neighborhood, one that lives on my cul-de-sac across the street from me.
We'll talk about that later.
There's one up the street, up the street where all the people live, right?
It's not working early.
Excuse me, there's one up the street that, where all the traffic comes from.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, he, he actually sometimes turns in and just does our cul-de-sac before he goes into work, which I think is great that he comes by in a different ways, you know? But that's what I'm trying to say. You cannot be there all the time, it's impossible.
Right.
The, the city itself, even though I live in a city of Fall River, I understand that that's a wooded area. It's not like living in the city downtown where you folks are overwhelmed, including that Pine Street, 'cause I nearly got nailed twice coming, going to the doctors over there.
Yeah.
So I get it, that's, that to me is important as a nursery, not too far from that intersection. I've seen some horrible things on that intersection, so I was kind of glad that that was on the docket today also, 'cause I drive into the city.
Yeah, and chief, um, do you have the, uh, as, as far as what we've done in the past, and I think they've worked, like those, um, like you've put on Eastern Avenue, uh, the speed limit. Can, can those fit, can those, is that a good fit for that, a particular neighborhood up there?
Uh, I can check to, uh, the, the issue, we have to have a power source.
Okay, right.
So I have to have a pole that has some electricity to it and, uh.
I think I've talked to other.
But we do have, um, we do have some that can go out. Um, and I'll check to see if there's one that's, that's fitting for that area.
Okay.
I think that's.
All right, I think, I mean, I think, Council Dion, go ahead.
Um, so again, you, do you think a thirty-day, um?
I think that's reasonable.
Is reasonable moving forward?
Sure.
And I certainly would have to think that moving forward also, a couple of citations that hit people in the pocket is gonna slow them down.
Right.
Correct. The fact that you're gonna have some, uh, enforcement out there is, is going to take effect.
Hmm.
Like I said, you know, today, just, you know, the hours that we're there, we had, we had twelve issue, uh, twelve citations, so.
And in what time period?
Uh, we were there between ten and, uh, I believe four was the last time I, I checked in with my guys.
So twelve citations in four hours?
Yeah. But, you know, keep in mind, the, you know, we're talking, you know, it was, it wasn't the, the people doing fifty, it was, you know, people who are just hovering above that, uh, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven mark. Um, there's a lot of education going on, but, you know, you know, you can imagine, especially in a very small, close knit, uh, community, uh, everyone knows the issue.
Yeah.
So when you're stopping these residents, uh, it's immediately like, "Hey, I don't know why you're stopping me, I'm only going ten miles over the speed limit."
Yeah.